Wait till the TV turns on here. Okay, here we go. Good morning again, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday Morning Board of Commissioners meeting for July 18th. For introduction purposes, my name is Todd Wilchin. I am the Chair of the County Board this year. On my left, fellow Commissioners Jennifer Brinkman, Deb Shore. On my right, Roma Amundson, and the Vice Chair, Bill Avery. Joining us today from the County Attorney's Office is Mr. David Durbin. From the County Clerk's Office, we have the County Clerk, Mr. Dan Nolte, and Kelly Lundgren. From the County Board Office, we have the Chief Administrative Officer, Carrie Egan, and our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Ann Ames. Please join me now to stand and pledge the allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please start the agenda.
The copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff at the front of the hearing room. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. A Jen and I want our minutes to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 11th, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, July 11th. Any discussion or correction? Hearing none, please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, our claims to approve of all claims processed through July 18th, 2017.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve all claims processed through July 18th. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentations. Three A is recognition of the County City Building Art Exhibit with Jay Gerber. Good morning, Mr. Gerber.
Good morning, and thank you for inviting me to discuss my art, and thank you for making the space available for artists to show some of their work. First of all, I'll give you a brief history. I grew up in southwest Kansas in a small town of Fowler, about 10 miles from the Oklahoma border. It was a good place to spend your first years. I didn't have art in schools there. The only art I remember is drawing and coloring turkeys around Easter time and coloring the Kansas State Seal. But I graduated from Fowler High School and did my bachelor's degree at St. Benedict's College in Atchison, Kansas, and graduate school at the University of Kansas, and post-doc at Stanford University. My first job was with the Center for Disease Control Field Station in Kansas City. And second job, I came to Norton Laboratories, which became the Smith-Klein Beecham Laboratories, which became Pfizer, which is now ZEAS. And I was a research scientist there. And I liked the work I was doing in research and development, developing vaccines. I found that to be very, very exciting. It was a way to discovery and creativity. And this kind of spilled over to painting, abstract painting, which I started when I retired about 15 years ago. And that, I do abstract painting, which I have some examples of. You've seen it out in the, perhaps you've seen it out in the hallway. Abstract painting is, as opposed to realistic painting, is from your mind. It, I find, spills out into the work. You don't know, I don't know what, sometimes what I'm going to create. The painting takes a mind of its own, and I see it evolving in front of me. And here's an example. Different people will see different things in the painting. It's studying colors and the movement. And a second painting. Did you see anything in that painting that reminded you of anything? This one, I, this was an old painting, which was a different subject altogether. And I saw a triangle in it, and that made me think of a sail, a boat. And so I put the boat underneath it. And you see a sail all over rough seas, and this, to me, looks like the city over here, the port, and the boat heading for the port. And title is "Coming Home." So, are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Mr. Gerber? Commissioner Avery?
What was your career before you took up this? Lawyer?
I was a scientist.
Scientist?
I started out as a research scientist at Norton Laboratories, and then retired as a project director. So it was quite different. This is, it's not a career, this art to me, it's more of a hobby. And I find it therapeutic, too, because I have Parkinson's disease. And if I'm painting and really involved with the painting, I don't need to take my medicine until later on. So I think it's a joy of what I'm doing. It evidently gets the dopamine rolling, and I can go longer without taking Lipodopa.
Commissioner Shore?
Well, Mr. Gerber, thank you for sharing your story and sharing your art. It certainly has, brightens up the days of the many people that work in this building. You're a very talented man.
Yes, thank you so much for sharing your talent with the public.
Bye.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please continue the next item.
Next is the Commissioners Award of Excellence, the June winner, Mike Holly, County Engineering, in the category of productivity. And I've got the nomination here, I'll read. Mike Holly has been selected as the Commissioners Award of Excellence winner for June 2017. Mike works as an engineering technician, too, and began working for the county on September 27th, 2007. He was nominated by Brendan Lilly, Silver Engineer, in the category of productivity. In his nomination, Mr. Lilly states, "Mike Holly has been with the Lancaster County Engineering Department for almost 10 years. Throughout that time, he has made quite a positive impact on the people around him. Mike shows initiative and is always ready to take on new tasks. Besides being an efficient and precise draftsman and designer, he is always ready to throw on his boots and help out with surveys when he is needed in that capacity. In addition to all his work, he has volunteered when needed, including participation in employee advisory team and wellness committee." Mr. Lilly continues, "Mike always does his work without complaint. When asked to take over a new task, he does so with grace and ambition, and when faced with a task he is not familiar with, he is not averse to asking for help. Most often, he ends up taking the task and running with it, doing a great job in the process. Recently, Mike completed all of the CAD drafting design for the 2016 new asphalt paving project, which included almost 4 million of new paving in various locations around the county. At the same time, he completed survey processing for the survey group and legal track descriptions and drawings for the right-of-way group. As if this weren't enough to fill a person's schedule, Mike has been completing most of the draft, drafting design for the miscellaneous smaller maintenance projects that are repaired or built by the county maintenance forces. In conclusion, Mr. Lilly states, "An engineer would be hard-pressed to find a draftsman, designer that can do a better job than Mike. For these reasons, we are pleased to award Mike Holly with the Commissioners Awards of Excellence for the month of June 2017."
Thank you.
Yeah, we are so pleased to be able to provide you with this, to offer you this plaque in recognition of the great work that you do. It seems like you're kind of an all-purpose sort of fellow, you know? Is that, you would say? Because you started listing at least four different groups that you're working in, and then you also have the technical skills to really move things along quickly. And so with the $4 million of projects that you've been doing, you're very much a tremendous asset to the county and to the engineering department. Pam, you're lucky to have her.
I am. And I just, I just want to add that throughout my engineering career, I actually have had the opportunity to work with, with the Holly brothers, and I think Mike's parents are here today? Are your parents here? No? Your wife and your children?
Yes.
Okay, so the reality is, though, this is a civil engineering and survey family, and they're all very talented at what they do in our communities. And so you may recognize the name Holly from, from other, other, other things, right? So, but I do want to say about Mike is that I appreciate that since I came into office, I have asked for a lot of change, and we really have removed the silos of the workforce within the engineering floor, where we now have a community that is holistically working on projects, and that has made a big difference for how we take projects forward. And Mike has been a major part of the standardization and process of that, and it has really helped us with our efficiency. And so I want to personally thank Mike for all he's done. In particular, I want to thank him for volunteering to work extra hours to ensure that we could get those bridge-to-box culvert jobs out this year, because that was a major push, and those six projects, of course, were unplanned projects for us. So, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike, if you want to come on up and respond to all that, that would be helpful.
Well, first of all, it's a, it's a very kind nomination. There's a lot of, there's a lot of great people that work for the county engineer, so I'm very thankful for this award, and I thank the county board for it, and thank Pam and Brendan and Ken Seer as well. So, I really appreciate it.
You've got special people with you.
I do.
If you guys want to stand up and introduce yourselves, we'd catch you on fam, get you on camera.
Yep, my wife Katie, my son Owen, and then my daughter Eliora.
Thank you for being here.
Join us today. So, thank you again.
Well, no, thank you so much for your work on behalf of the county.
Three C is recognition of Mitch Sump for being named the Nebraska Association of Transportation Providers Rookie of the Year for 2016. Sandy Lutz, Aging Partners Administrator for the Community Activities and Services Division.
I want to thank you for taking the time to acknowledge the great work of Mitch Sump. Where are you? I also want to acknowledge and thank the Board for your commitment and dedication to serving the needs of people who are older throughout Lancaster County. It has truly made a big difference to the people that we serve. First of all, Mitch has won the Rookie of the, Rookie Manager of the Year Award from, through the, through the Nebraska Association of Transportation Providers. And that, that award is for managers who have served five years or less, and who demonstrate dedication, positive attitude, and contributions to the transit system. Mitch has worked for us, for Aging Partners, for two and a half years, and during that time, he has excelled in ensuring that the needs, the transportation needs of seniors are met. Specifically, he has gone out to the communities throughout Lancaster County and addressed the needs of individuals. He's met with people individually, he's met with different agencies and organizations trying to get a good, a good understanding of what the needs are and how those needs can be met. I am particularly impressed with Mitch's understanding of fiscal needs and the need for efficiency in providing those services. He's always willing to step up and, and take whatever task is presented to him, but he exercises also very good judgment, both in a fiscal manner and in addressing truly the needs of individuals. Mitch really is an administrator's dream employee. He does allow me to sleep soundly throughout the night. I know that he monitors the weather, he monitors road conditions, the vehicles, and his staff. He's always willing to adjust his schedule to, to ensure the people are out there and it's safe conditions and satisfactory services are being provided. In addition to providing the transportation services, Mitch also supervises and manages the durable medical program that we have, the handyman program, and the emergency response program. His plate is very full. He directly supervises several staff, including the drivers and the people that manage the other programs that he has. With that, I just want to, Mitch wants to say a few words. Sorry.
Well, that was kind of embarrassing. I didn't know she was going to say all that, but it's always nice to be recognized, but when I did find out about this, I, I let my team know that this, even though my name's on the plaque, it's a team win, because that's the most important thing. And Commissioner Brinkman, I understand that you kind of had a, a push in getting this for, so thank you, I do appreciate it. It's, it's always nice to be recognized, so. And 49 is awful old to be a rookie of anything, so.
It's never too late to be a rookie. This proves it. So, thank you so much, Mitch.
Mitch.
Number four is new business. Four A is special designated license application for Myers Wine, Inc., for the following events: A reception at Prairie Creek Inn, 2400 South 148th Street, Walton, on August 12th, 2017, and a reception at Kleinschmidt Residence, 11401 Van Dorn, Walton, on August 11th, 2017.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the SDL applications for Myers Wine for two events. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B is a special designated license application from Blue Stem Tree Farm at 5895 West Frank Road, Crete, for a country music concert to be held on August 19th, 2017.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I don't have to come up?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the SDL application from Blue Stem Tree Farm for Frog Fest. Any discussion? I don't know.
No, I was just coming, if there's any questions. Dr. Martin was not able to come because of his work schedule, so I just wanted to be here in case there's any questions.
Are there any questions for the event organizer? Commissioner Shore?
This is year five.
This is year five, yeah.
Year five, any significant changes from last year?
Um, not significant changes. We just, every year, we kind of grow as far as security and working with law enforcement. I'm doing a couple tweaks with the county and the Sheriff's Department for a couple things that they requested, but no huge changes, no.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a mini grant app, mini grant contract application award with the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety to pay overtime in an amount of $5,174 for the you drink and drive, you lose crackdown.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the mini grant contract with the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is Medicare enrollment application for clinics and group practices for revalidation of the Lancaster County Community Mental Health Crisis Center's enrollment information.
Good morning. It's just a, approximately every five years, Medicare request to revalidate our application that was submitted quite a few years back, and this is just that process, so.
And I know we know who you are, but could you please?
Scott Etherington with the Mental Health Crisis Center, thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Etherington?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Medicare enrollment application. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is an interlo, in an intra-local agreement with the following counties for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Lancaster County will, we will be reimbursed at a rate of $276 per juvenile per day, and this is for Dawson County, Gage County, Jefferson County, Merrick, Merrick County, Phelps County, Thayer County, and York County.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreements with counties for the safekeeping, care, and sustenance of pre-adjudicated juveniles at the Youth Services Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
No.
Motion carries four yes, one no. Four F is an amendment to kind of contract C-13-335 with Inmate Calling Solutions LLC for inmate phone services for the Adult Detention Center. The amendment extends the contract for an additional two-month term beginning July 23rd, 2017, through September 22nd, 2017.
Good morning. Ken Prey, Inter Jail Administrator, Corrections. Real briefly, we've had this contract since July of 2013 when we moved into the new facility. It's a four-year contract for our inmate phones, and there's an option to extend it another four years. And we're currently negotiating with ICS. We've been real pleased with their service, and what we're trying to do is see if we can work video visitations into the renewal. And we basically just need another couple months to keep negotiating, because there's been a couple hang-ups on it, and see if we can get it worked out. None of the terms or conditions from this last 12 months have changed at all. It would just be another two months to help get things figured out.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prey?
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the contract with Inmate Calling Solutions for inmate phone services for the Adult Detention Center. Any discussion? Commissioner Avery?
These kinks you're trying to work out, are any of these something you can identify specifically?
Um, and I haven't been in all the negotiations, I've been in quite a few of them, but basically there's some disagreement over what the equipment would cost, because they would be bringing their equipment in, the equipment that basically came with the building from another company's outdated, and, you know, how long it would take to get the money back from that, and it's just kind of crunching numbers and making sure we get the best deal possible for the county. If it doesn't work out, it, with adding the video visitation, we're, we're still fine. We have a, what we're doing now is a service agreement with the company to maintain what we have. And that commission rate and, and all that's already pretty much set up. We were just hoping to kind of enhance it more, if it comes out in our favor.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is an amendment to kind of contract C-14-626 with Cardiac Science Corporation using the Purchasing Solutions Alliance Contract Number 14-100 for automated external defibrillators related products and services. The parties hereby amend the contract to add Lifeguard MD, Inc. as a distributor.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Cardiac Science Corporation. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is an amendment to kind of contract C-15-464 with SAP Brothers, Inc., for the annual supply of lubricants. The amendment is a price increase for the remainder of the contract term per attachment A.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with SAP Brothers for the annual supply of lubricants. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Brinkman?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four I is an amendment to kind of contract C-9-137 with Legacy Inmate Communications for inmate phone services for county correctional facilities. The amendment extends the contract for a term beginning July 23rd, 2017, to July 22nd, 2018.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the county contract with Legacy Inmate Communications for inmate phone services at the county correctional facilities. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J, our contracts with the following medical providers for specialized medical care of general assistance clients, providers will reemb, will be reimbursed at the Medicaid rate, and this includes Nebraska Pulmonary Specialties LLC, Lincoln Surgical Hospital, Lincoln Surgery Center, Frontier Home Medical, General Surgery Associates, Lincoln Nephrology and Hypertension.
Good morning, Sarah with Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. Again, general assistance has a contract with People's Health Center to provide primary care, but occasionally, there are general assistance clients who need specialists in the communities. These contracts address those needs that our clients may have with those specialists. We are in the process of updating these. There's about 125 different contracts out there, so you'll see them appearing on the agenda over the course of the next week. I'll be here those weeks to answer any questions, if you may have any. But they reimburse us at the Medicaid rate, and again, if the client is approved for Medicaid, then we work with the provider to recoup those funds from Medicaid.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contracts with medical providers for specialized medical care for general assistance clients. Any discussion? Commissioner Shore?
Question, with the movement of these clients to Health 360, how does this contract process change?
It doesn't change in that the referral for the specialty care will be coming from People's Health Center physicians instead of from the Health Department. Otherwise, it should be pretty seamless. We're in the process now, as you know, of working through that transition, so it's, it's ongoing, but it's happening, and it'll be done by September 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Hoyle? Okay. Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K is acceptance of the Lancaster County Back on Track State Grant Award 17-JS-0424 from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice, the amount of $18,100.
And this is a competitive grant award through state dollars. And NOLA, the agency director for the hub, is here to talk more about it later. When the contract's up. It'll be up here in the next, or if you want to talk about it now. Okay.
Okay.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the state grant award from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice for the Lancaster County Back on Track Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a grant contract with Matt Talbot Kitchen, an outreach in amount of $10,000 for the Hunger Relief and Nutrition Program. The contract is funded by the Joint Budget Committee for the period of July 1st, 2017, for the period of July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
And I have all of the agency directors with the contracts that are on the agenda today, so I'll just let them come forward and talk.
Well, thank you. I'm Suzanne Blue, Director of Matt Talbot Kitchen and Outreach. Thank you for your commitment to human services here in Lincoln and Lancaster County. We provide daily hunger relief to the working poor and homeless. That's two meals every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We are serving over a hundred thousand meals annually. And we do that through the coordination of a very strong volunteer program. We have thousands of volunteers annually and about nine hundred a month who actually come in and provide much of the food, prepare it, and then serve it to our guests. So it's a tremendous contribution, but of course, we have to coordinate that effort, but it saves the community and a lot of money to provide those hundred thousand meals to those in need. So it's very vital for our community, and our volunteers are the heart and soul of our organization. The nutrition education component involves a registered dietitian who's on our team. She's a medical nutrition therapist and provides medical nutrition therapy at no cost for individuals in the community who struggle with diabetes, hypertension, other nutrition-related diseases. So that's a vital program for us as well. She also works with the volunteer teams to improve the nutrition and quality of the meals provided, which are so important when many of our homeless guests receive their only nutrition at Matt Talbot, and many do suffer from medical issues. So that's very important to us. Also, Matt Talbot is expanding significantly right now with homeless prevention. We're doing more housing and substance use counseling, which are vital to our efforts to alleviate homelessness in Lincoln. So the support for our feeding program really helps enable us to continue on with our program expansion, so we're very thankful.
Any questions for Ms. Blue? Well, thank you so much for joining us this morning.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Matt Talbot Kitchen and Outreach for the Hunger Relief Nutrition Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. A is a grant contract with Cedars Youth Services, the amount of twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars for the Emergency Shelter Crisis Stabilization Program. The contract is funded by Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for the period of July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you very much. Jim Blue, President of Cedars Organization. It's always worked very well for me to follow Susie, so I'm happy to do so today also. Appreciate the longstanding support for the entire Cedars Organization and our array of coordinated services for kids and families who are in vulnerable situations in our community. The Emergency Shelter, which sometimes is referred to as Pioneer Center these days, has certainly gone through really some interesting transitions over the years. Today, our number-one client population is kids who we are serving as an alternative to detention. We had sixty kids in our emergency shelter in the last fiscal year, ending June thirtieth, who came to us directly from the Lancaster County Detention Center. We were successful, meaning that those kids moved on to their next planned placement with ninety percent of those kids last year. So this is working very well. Eighteen hundred nights at the detention center were substituted for a community-based placement as Cedars Emergency Shelter, and we're very pleased with that. One night that a child does not have to be behind bars is a good night. Certainly, these youth involved in our juvenile justice system are not the only kids that we serve. We serve some kids that are involved in Nebraska Department of Health and Human Services, state wards. We have a growing number of kids who are not affiliated with any state government agency, private runaway and homeless kids. We will continue to evolve. We appreciate your support. It is vital, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blue?
I just want to make a point that, you know, as we as a county move forward, we've discussed alternatives to juvenile detention, which I think is something that not only is beneficial to the taxpayers, but it's also the right thing to do.
Absolutely.
And we would not be able to do that without your support and your assistance. So thank you on behalf of the county, and we look forward to working with you moving forward as we have in the past to find innovative solutions to solve some of the challenges we have with juvenile detention.
Thank you, sir. I'll pass that on to the team.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Cedar Youth Services for the Emergency Shelter Crisis Stabilization Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four N is a grant contract with Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters, the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the Mentoring High-Risk Youth Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid Grant. The term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Good morning. I'm Kirsten Hill. I'm the Executive Director for Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters, and I want to begin by thanking the county for past support that they've given to Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters and our program. Our mission is that we want to provide children who are facing adversity with strong, enduring, professionally-supported, one-to-one relationships that will change their lives for the better. National research has shown that positive relationships between littles and bigs will show a measurable impact on the life of that child. We provide a community-based, so you're going to see our bigs and littles out in the community, taking part in baseball games, going to the park, maybe picking up an ice cream cone, but developing those relationships out in the community. And those are all professionally supported by an expert staff that we have at Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters who support those relationships and help those volunteers and also the mentees, the littles, to develop those relationships and sustain those relationships over a long-term period. The children who participate in our program come out with more confidence, and not just confidence in life, but we see that, but confidence in their schoolwork, confidence to tackle day-to-day activities. They get along better with their families, they get along better with their peers, and they get along better with other adults. They're less likely to use drugs or alcohol, they're less likely to skip school, and they're more likely to be volunteers and participate in their community. What a program like Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters does is open doors of new opportunity to kids. We provide kids with experiences that they may not have in their regular lives. And the program that we're talking to about funding for is specifically for high-risk youth. And so what we're hoping to do is to provide another layer of intervention to get those kids on the right track and provide them with additional supports in their lives. And when we change the life of a child in our program, we're not just changing the life of that child, but we're changing the life of really the whole system of the family and the future for the family and for that child by providing them with new and different experience, again, increased confidence, expanded horizons. And we have approximately a hundred and sixty matches, and we'll continue to make more with the grant funding. So we appreciate your support, and we thank you very much for what you do for Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters.
Are there any questions for Ms. Hill? Commissioner Amundson?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment.
Yes.
And many years ago, when I was a Girl Scout leader, we had a good-sized group of Girl Scouts. We had four leaders. And for a period of nine months, it was. Each of the senior Girl Scouts with one of the leaders worked with a little. And that was really a tremendous learning experience for our Girl Scouts. It made a significant impression upon them, and I think that it really, they enjoyed working with them. So I just wanted to say, I think it's a great thing that you're doing, and I know that I really enjoyed my interaction with the organization.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Any other questions for Ms. Hill? Hearing none, I entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Heartland Big Brothers Big Sisters for the Mentoring High-Risk Youth Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O is a grant contract with Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults, the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred dollars for the Back on Track Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Grant. The term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Good morning. My name is NOLA Derby Bennett. I'm the Executive Director at the Hub. I too would like to thank the county for your longstanding support and guidance for our organization as we've grown over the last ten years. The Hub is an organization that serves youth and young adults ages sixteen to twenty-four who are system-involved and disconnected from their families and the community. We offer programming in the areas of education, employment, housing, mental health, and community involvement. One of our education programs is Back on Track, and this program is facilitated within the walls of four Lincoln Public Schools, high schools, Lincoln High, Northeast, Southeast, and East. The goal of the program is to support the young people who are identified by the school as habitually truant, credit deficient, and in danger of falling off track to graduate on time. We work individually with the students, creating relationships with them and their families to identify the barriers that help those, to help those young people reengage in school, communicate with teachers, and to reconnect to the school. And we have been offering program of this kind since two thousand and nine in the schools and have worked with Lincoln Public Schools to increase the graduation rate over that time. Outside of this funding, but relevant, is the fact that we run a GED prep class at the Hub. When we have a student who is too far behind to ever achieve the credits necessary to graduate on time or at all, or a student who has made the decision to drop out of high school, oftentimes there's a mental health barrier that prevents them from being successful in high school. Or we often see pregnant and parenting young people make the decision to leave school so that they can move through a GED and then have employment in order to be able to support their family. We are able, because we've been able to develop this relationship, we're able to plug them into GED supports, which move them quickly through the education process and then into employment. So it ends up benefiting, long-term, the family of that young person to move through the education process quickly. Usually, those are young people who are already credit deficient and are looking at attending school until they're twenty-one. So we would like to be able to help them. We certainly aren't recruiting young people to drop out of school. That's not our role, but we want to be supportive in whatever decision they make with regards to their education. So it is something that we are frequently seeing with young people who are immigrants and refugees, who are here and are attending school but are not going to be able to achieve the credits that they need in order to graduate before they turn twenty-one. So that has become, that process of being able to support them while they're in school has become a nice resource for them to be able then to plug immediately into GED services. So again, I just want to thank the county for your support, and I will answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Derby Bennett? Commissioner Shore?
Just curious, how many students or young people are you working with at one time? What's an average?
So in the schools, we're working with about, probably around about eighty students at any one time. The Hub, as an organization, serves between five hundred and fifty and six hundred youth per year.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkman?
Can you talk a little bit about why these four high schools and not the other two?
Yeah, so those are, North Star, which seems like it would be a likely school for us to be in, actually has an LPS employee that does this work within their building. And Southwest, we do participate with, although we don't have a staff that works in their building full-time. They don't have as much of a need for this kind of support, but they certainly do reach out to us when they have a request. And actually, we had, with this application, we had applied for the ability to expand to Bryan Community School and Yankee Hill as well. Both of those principals had reached out to me. They're both new principals who had worked in schools that we are serving. And so when they got their new jobs at the new schools, they were like, this is a service that's really important to us, and we would like to see if you could come and do it. But unfortunately, the Crime Commission wasn't able to increase our funding to add to the, so that we could serve those schools. So that's why we're in, the schools that we're in have the highest need, and we are open to going and serving other schools if we're able to find the funding to support that.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults for the Back on Track Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. P is a grant contract with the Mediation Center, the amount of forty thousand dollars for the Restorative Justice Program. The grant is funded by Juvenile Justice Prevention Funds for a term of July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Hi, I'm Casey Cargus. I'm the Executive Director of the Mediation Center. We're one of six mediation centers across the state. We work on nearly a thousand cases in our county, dealing with people with conflict. This particular project I'm going to be reporting on, too, Project Restore, is kind of becoming the star of the state, dealing with kids who get in trouble at school. So if a kid gets in trouble at school, let's say a fight, and a ticket is processed and gets to the county attorney, if it's a first time. What we're learning is if we kick kids out of school, graduation rates go down. And in some way, if we kick them out of school, we're pushing them out. And so the new thing is, is how do you restore them back in in a healthy way back within the system where they have the supports to be successful? And so we do what's called a restorative justice practice. We call them victim-youth conferences. Youth come in, we also bring the parents in. They meet with a coordinator at the Mediation Center after they work with the county. And then they work to prepare on a conference. That conference could be meeting with the other youth where they have the conflict. Sometimes it's not appropriate to have the other youth in the room, and then we bring in and train what they call surrogates. And they work through the process of what happened. Are they willing to apologize, write an apology letter? Are they willing to pay back something that they were, that got hurt at the time? And then we work on, if it happens again, how they could do it differently, and who was affected within the system. So when they do that, they not only affect themselves, probably the other person, family, the relationship with the schools. And so we work on something called Project Restore, and how can we restore those youth back into the system where, when that happens again, the next time, hopefully, they will make better choices. So the state is trying to figure out to do what this county has figured out with the relationship with Lincoln Public Schools, county attorney's office with the county to come up with this project that has been very successful. So any questions on Project Restore?
Any questions for Mr. Cargus?
Oh, thank you for joining us this morning and providing information about this program. It's something that we know that the health, the public service, I'm sorry, the Human Services Director has been working very diligently on and is being recognized for. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's nice to know Lancaster County is leading the way.
They are. Everybody's trying to figure out how you're doing it, so.
Any questions? Okay, otherwise I entertain a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Mediation Center for the Restorative Justice Program. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Q is a grant contract with the Mediation Center, the amount of forty-six thousand dollars for Restorative Justice Practices Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Juvenile Services Aid State Grant. The term of the grant contract is July first, two thousand seventeen, through June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the grant contract with the Mediation Center for the Restorative Justice Practices Program through the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Brinkman?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. R is a political subdivision tort claim filed against Lancaster County by Charlie R. Johnson.
Based upon the recommendation of the county attorney, I move we deny this tort claim.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the political subdivision tort claim filed by Charlie Johnson. Any discussion?
Could we hear from the county attorney?
Okay. Mr. Durbin, does anyone have any questions or?
Dave Durbin, Deputy County Attorney, Lancaster County Attorney's Office. Because this is a communication of a claim against the county, I'd recommend that we move into executive. move into executive session.
Is there any motion?
Well, I move we enter into executive session at ten minutes until ten, in order to protect the public interest.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter executive session for the purpose of Okay, we have a motion and a second to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing a political subdivision tort claim at nine fifty, to protect public interest. discussing a political subdivision tort claim at nine fifty, to protect public interest. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please call the roll. Please call the roll.
Avery. Avery.
Yes. Yes.
Amundson. Amundson.
Yes. Yes.
Shore. Shore.
Yes. Yes.
Brinkman. Brinkman.
Yes. Yes.
Wilchun. Wilchun.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to come out of executive session at nine fifty-four. Any discussion?
Finally, Leba would like to weigh on, on the Railroad Transportation Safety District, the RTSD. As the body that regulates the RTSD levy rate, we're asking that you would lower their levy rate as well, to not assume the entire windfall. In 2012, the county board borrowed some of the RTSD levy. Leba supported that financial adjustment, and is not as concerned with returning the levy to the RTSD as several of you are. We understand why you are concerned. The new county budget will return some of what you borrowed, four cents, to the RTSD. However, we would ask you to consider taking the windfall out of that amount, thus allowing the county to keep a few more dollars, or simply lower the RTSD levy rate. Whichever method you use, Leba's asking for relief. The windfall is not coming from commercial property. It's not coming from office property. It's not coming from retail. It's not coming from manufacturing. The windfall is coming from homeowners. As a community, we need to stand up for families and their ability to afford a home. Certainly, the commissioners could easily find many ways to spend the windfall, but we're asking that you return a portion of it to the taxpayers of our community. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Mack? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wishing to make a statement?
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I was not here last week because I was out of town, but I didn't want to miss the opportunity to acknowledge Bevins Family Farms, who donated the right-of-way along 148th Street for the construction of the new bridge to Box Culvert Project. We do have a number of people throughout the year who, when we approach them, just say, you know, I'm okay with just donating this right-of-way to you, and I think that we don't really acknowledge that often the way we should. And so I just wanted to acknowledge the Bevins family's donation to Lancaster County for the construction of this Box Culvert, and humbly thank them.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to make a statement? Mr. Clerk, please continue the agenda.
Next is number seven, announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold staff, will hold staff meetings on Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, immediately following the Board of Equalization meeting, and Thursday, July 20th, 2017, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Luxford Studio of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, July 25th, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. The County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is broadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video on Demand, or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Any discussion? I'm sorry, please call the roll. Brinkman?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, and this includes American Legion, Department of Nebraska, Fellowship Baptist Church, Lincoln Literacy Council, Nebraska Safety Council, Inc., and Villa Marie School. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing for the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Anyone here to testify in support, in opposition, or in the neutral capacity on these applications? Hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Number four is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Next is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes, and this is for Marvin D. Chambers Life Estate and Terry Wendlin.
Rob Ogden, Chief Deputy County Assessor, Registered Deeds. These two are corrections to some errors we made. The Chamberlain, Chambers, I'm sorry, one is a significant increase because we missed some 72 acres of ag land on this parcel when it was split from two other, from one other parcel into two parcels. So we're correcting that. You approve it. We'll get a notice out, and they have 30 days to appeal. Same issue the other way around on Wendlin. We added one additional ag land line that shouldn't have been there, so the value is decreasing on that one. So that's the story of those two.
Any questions for Mr. Ogden?
I will move appro-
Do they cancel each other out?
I will move approval of the valuation change.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Amundson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six is notice of assessed valuation change for property taxation purposes for Greenbelt, and this includes Harland Ackerman and Christina Morrow, Irvin Anderson Life Estate, Scott and Janet Bauer, Gustavus and Janet Bitcher, Everett and Luanne Barans, Donald and Claudette Biscup, Matthew and Ashley Brand, Kyle and Lorraine Brock, David and Jennifer Brinkerhoff, Daniel and Rebecca Brown, Verlin and Deborah Berkey, Robert and Audrey Busboom, Rodney Chambers, Sean and Carrie Klosner, Suzanne Cromwell, Shane and Pamela Cutlers, Ronald and Jill and Edel, Danielle and Grace Factor, Lane and Angela Gisler, Todd and Susan Gutsmer, Laura Hardisty, Phyllis Hennessy and Timothy Flaherty, Gary and Lisa Julif, Donald and Nancy Keach, Julie Cook, Ross and Jamie Louch, Vincent Meyer and Tiffany Wellsant, David and Joy Miller, Zachary and Kyla Morton, Con and Marla Mueller, Todd and Sharon Munford, Garland and Renee Osterman, Gordon Petrie, Marvin and Cynthia Renner, Gregory and Barbara Rock, Kyle and Amy Royuk, Robert and Deborah Savage Family Trust, Curtis and Sheila Shin, Scott Snoozy and Seraphine Hutchins, Charles and Merrily Sabotka, Roy Stoner, Scott Stratton, Phil and Nancy Tegler, and they have two notices, Donald and Kimberly Thompson. Again, they have two notices, Kenneth Waldron, and Keith, and Michelle White.
Okay, these are what happen annually. As of June 30th, Greenbelt appeal, applications are filed with our office. We review them and must get them to you by the 20th for you to send out new notices. These all were approved by us, so we will also, I believe there's about 10 that are under Board of Equalization protest. We're forwarding those to the clerk's office and to the referees, so they see the different values there.
So just to clarify, the difference between these and a regular acreage would be, there is some type of agricultural activity taking place on this?
Agricultural activity, agricultural, holticultural use of the property.
Any other questions for Mr. Ogden?
That's not the entire property.
No, it's the portion that is being used for that.
I will move approval of the assessed valuation change for the properties, for the parties as listed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the notice of assessed value changes for property taxation purposes involving Greenbelt applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll. Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, not on agenda, we do so at this time. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on a matter not on the agenda? Okay.
Move adjourn. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Please call the roll. Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Okay, that adjourn, that concludes the Board of Equalization meeting.[1339.63]